March 26. Let me just open my agenda here. So the first thing we have in front of us today is continued public hearings. We're going to continue with, we have Beaver Brook Woods in front of us. We have, at this point in time, closed the public hearing. And we currently have a certificate of action in front of us. And I'm going to make sure, I'm going to, I'm sorry. We have got some of those recusers, recuse themselves. Thank you, Mr. Sears.
Francine.
No Francine.
We have no Francine today?
No Francine.
Okay. So in front of us, we have, we have a certificate of action that has been forwarded. Everybody had a chance to read it. And I'm going to let the board comment real quick and make sure there was anything beyond what the certificate of action, certificate of action has presented in front of us.
And you're going to come to me first.
Well, I can go to the other side if you'd like.
That's okay.
I just happen to be looking this way.
I read it. I think it's fine. It's detailed. The only thing that I'm a little concerned about is that I'm on the open space recreation advisory committee. And when the applicant presented it to us, one of the reasons we were supportive was not just the open space, but again, it was the rail trail. And we're under the impression that it's not just going to be, this is the swath, you can have it, that it's going to be made a rail trail usable for people. So in looking at the certificate of action, it talks about having the center line, I believe, of 10 feet either side, and that's it, just kind of an easement.
Just a deeded easement, yeah.
Just a deeded easement. It doesn't discuss that the applicant needs to do more than just provide the easement.
I think in the past, I don't want to jump in front of the rest of the board, but I know that in the past, when we've had these kinds of situations come up, we haven't gone into too much detail in terms of what the requirements are.
For the special permit. But I just, you know, want to, again, emphasize because I am on that board and I was one that voted to send the letter here in support.
When the final, I know that it's something I'm going to be thinking of also.
Okay, good.
But I'm more concerned about it when the product comes in front of us in the future.
Otherwise, that was the only condition that I saw that I was just a little bit concerned about with the way it was written. I think it's fine. I think it's great.
John?
I thought it was well-written. I have no more comments on it.
Charles?
No, I've got nothing.
Nathaniel, any questions?
No questions or comments. Thanks.
I have nothing, nothing further, so we just need to...
Starts here, so.
You'll let that, who wants that?
Do I get to do it?
I can't really read it.
You can't read it?
Well, I can.
Your eyes adjusted?
No, really. Got to get my eyes adjusted.
All right. "We, the Davis Planning Board, have been requested under Section 30 and 33 of the zoning bylaws of the special permit for property in a tract consistent of assessors map 033 lot 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and assessors map 025 lot 87 containing approximately 6.34 acres of land. Do hereby vote to approve a special permit for eight-lot cluster development as provided on the Section 33 of the zoning bylaw. This special permit for a cluster development known as Beaver Brook Woods is granted subject to the following conditions: One, the water main must be looped back to Maple Street through an easement to be shown on the definitive plan set. Two, the proposed benches should be provided within the existing right-of-way of the adjacent rail bed at a location determined by the planning board during the definitive plan stage. Three, an easement must be provided 10 feet in width based upon the trail center line for the proposed trail through the proposed open space area. Four, a crosswalk must be provided from the southern sidewalk proposed within the new right-of-way to the proposed trailhead. Five, a crosswalk must be provided at the mouth of the newly proposed walk to allow for the continuation of pedestrian progress along Maple Street. Six, detail must be provided on the proposed retaining wall supporting the proposed road, including any associated guardrail or fencing required. The plan for this wall must be drafted and stamped by the structural engineer. Seven, any association documents, i.e. condominium, honos, et cetera, must be reviewed and approved by the board to ensure the performance and maintenance plan for all improvements in the way and associated utilities prior to the issuance of the building permit. These documents must ensure that the property owners and their successors are responsible for, at their own expense, the maintenance of the internal drive, the site stormwater system, and any and all utilities on site. Eight, any changes in the layout of the right-of-way will require a modification of this permit and approved by the planning board. Nine, the decision is not intended to interfere with the abrogate or annual or any other local bylaw rules or regulations statute or any other provisions of law. Ten, the corner easement provided for the newly created way at the intersection with Maple Street must be cleared, grubbed, and cleaned to provide adequate sight lines for residents of the new development as well as motorist use in Maple Street. Eleven, per 33.2.5 of the bylaw provision for the proposed open space must be provided. In the event the town of Davis will not become the fee owner of the proposed open space, the applicant must execute in record an agreed-upon declaration of restrictive covenants protecting the proposed open space shown on the plan on and before the completion of construction of the proposed development. Twelve, any acceptance of the proposed open space by the town or associated entities must be accompanied by, with a plan of record certified survey and be contingent upon any environmental assessment, the cost of which ought to be borne by the applicant prior to acceptance. Thirteen, management and maintenance documents must be provided for the proposed open space and must include provisions requiring the maintenance of the approved trail located within the open space area per 33.2.6 of the bylaw. Fourteen, certificate of occupancy permit will not be issued for any new dwelling until the planning division indicates that: A, the recorded drawings as built of the sewer and water mains have been provided to the Department of Public Works; B, the Department of Public Works has received the appropriate sewer and water tie-in information on the unit for which a certificate of occupancy is sought. Waivers. A waiver is hereby granted for the subdivision rules and regulations for the following: One, V.B.A.A., a waiver to construct a dead-end street greater than 600 feet in length. This waiver is granted on the condition that the water main be looped back out to Maple Street through a deeded utility easement. Two, V.D.A.A., waiver to forego the installation of a fire alarm. This waiver is granted. Three, V.D. 9 and V. 1EIO. In typical detail, a waiver is requested to reduce the width of the cape card berm to 12, where 24 inches is required. The waiver is granted. Four, V. 1.C.I., a waiver is requested to construct the sidewalks before bounds are set. This waiver is granted on the condition that the developer shall provide exact location of the bounds prior to sidewalk construction to ensure sidewalls are in the proposed right-of-way. Further, the developer must coordinate the location of the proposed electrical boxes with the Davis Electrical Division so they do not occur in the same location as the proposed bounds. Five, V. 1.D. 2.C., a waiver is requested to allow two feet of cover over drainage pipes where four of cover is required. This waiver is granted on the condition that the developer provides do-tell iron pipe from drainage structure to drainage structure in areas where there is less than four feet of coverage, cover. Six, V. 1.D. 2.B., a waiver is requested to allow PVC sewer pipe where asbestos cement pipe is required. This waiver is granted on the condition that all new sewer piping shall be SDR 35 PVC. Seven, Table I, a waiver to reduce the width of the layout from 50 to 42 feet, and a waiver to reduce width of tree belt from seven feet to three feet to 12 feet and eight feet. This waiver is granted. The grant of this waiver is conditioned such that, should the town meeting not accept the way, the way becomes the sole responsibility of the association constructed to maintain the way and utilities within the development. Any approval of this special permit shall lapse within three years from the grant thereof if construction or commencement of the use is not begun by such date except for good cause, signed on the 26th of March 2019 by the chair.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
On condition number one, on, this is just condition number one on the third page. With regard to the water main loop, that was never discussed during the course of the hearing, nor was it in the engineering department's report as to requiring a loop. So I would ask if the board would consider adding to that if deemed necessary during the definitive subdivision process.
Does the board have any quick discussion associated with an amendment? Not to change the condition, but to add the term "if necessary."
I could go along with that.
I'm comfortable with that.
Who determines whether it's necessary?
That would be the engineering department.
As long, as long as they determine it's necessary, yeah.
Yeah, when they come in front of us for the final subdivision, when it's finally set, that's when we will be discussing these, because engineering has to get a better look at it, so.
Okay. I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with adding the term "as necessary." According to staff. As necessary in conjunction with staff.
You would ultimately make the decision as the board.
Yeah, true. So we have an amendment. Do I have a motion for the amendment?
I move that condition one be amended to stay in the language.
So now we're voting on the amended certificate of action. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Then you have to vote on...
Oh, we have the, do we have a certificate for, that's the...
You have to vote on the main motion.
They did, they said "as amended."
Yeah, "as amended," yeah.
You're waiting.
Yeah.
I was writing. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time on...
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're welcome. Good luck.
We have 25 Pope's Lane in front of us. I have already opened and read the... Oh, we got to get Jim on that, right? We have 25 Pope's Lane in front of us for a special permit for a contractor's yard.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of Michael Seelig, who is here this evening as well. He is the owner of the property at 25 Pope's Lane, having purchased that at the end of last year. Also with me tonight is Jay Polak...
Polakowitz.
Polakowitz, Katie Cruz, and Phil Pattison from Hancock Associates. And we are here requesting a special permit for a contractor's yard, together with site plan approval for the contractor's yard. The property is located in the Highway Corridor zoning district. We have filed with you a full site plan application. And an application was filed in January by Hancock. We have provided some supplemental information, including a project narrative that I submitted to you. We had a meeting with town staff in the middle of February, with planning staff as well as building inspector and engineering department. We made some revisions to the plan based on the comments and feedback that we got at that time. And I think you have engineering department comments indicating that they are satisfied with the plan at this point. And I think the additional information that we supplemented the application with answered questions raised during, from the planning department's comments. We received last September a variance and a finding from the Board of Appeals to allow the existing single-family home that's on the property to be used for any purpose that's permitted either by right or by special permit in the Highway Corridor zone. We had to go to the Board of Appeals for that, number one, because the lot was undersized, and number two, the existing house is non-conforming as to the front setback. So we did receive that approval back in September. And now we're before you for the special permit, as you're the special permit granting authority, for a contractor's yard and for the site plan approval. What we're proposing to do is renovate the existing single-family home. There is no additional square footage being added. We're simply renovating that dwelling into an office for the contractor's yard. This being in the Highway Corridor zone, a residential use is actually a non-conforming use. The proposed office use is a conforming use, so we're actually eliminating a non-conformity here by this proposal. Again, no additional square footage. This is a small contractor's yard. Michael and one other employee will be on-site during the day. He will have his employees come in, pick up trucks. He has four trucks. Will come in, park their personal vehicles, take a truck out, go to the job site, come back at the end of the day, drop off the truck, and be on their way. Hours of operation Monday through Friday. I did indicate eight to five in the application. The hours of operation are actually 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Monday through Friday, probably no hours on the weekend. This property, being in the Highway Corridor zone, but specifically on Pope's Lane, you're all familiar with Pope's Lane, has a number of different uses that are similar. We have Bitcon and Mantor Construction, both of which are very large roadway construction type of operations that have lots of equipment, lots of trucks going in and out of Pope's Lane. They're located directly across the street from this site. There's also other contractor's yards located on Pope's Lane. And this, as I indicated, is going to be a very, very small operation with only two employees on-site. The project narrative that we did provide indicates that what we are proposing does meet the requirements for the special permit. Specifically, the municipal water and sewer systems will not become overloaded by the proposed contractor's yard. And in fact, there's probably going to be a decrease in use from a single-family home. Public streets will not become overloaded. This is a small contractor's yard with very few employees and is a very low traffic generator and very low, if any, impact on Pope's Lane. Value of the land and other buildings will not be depreciated by the proposed use. This will be a neat operation, as we'll show you on the site plan. The existing property is very, very well-kept and will certainly continue to be by Mr. Seelig. This will not cause an undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. We have provided for adequate facilities for vehicles coming into and off of the site, as well as pedestrians on the site, which will be very limited. Customers don't come to Mr. Seelig's business location. And we are eliminating, as I indicated, an existing non-conformity and providing a use that is permitted within the dwelling in this zoning district and eliminating the non-conformity of the residential use. And this is certainly a viable and an appropriate use for this particular site and for this neighborhood. So I think with that, I will turn it over to Jay to walk you through the site plan.
Good evening. I'm Jay Polakowitz with Hancock Associates. I was one of the civil engineers on this project. So in the existing condition, there is a house, the driveway, landscaped areas, grassy areas. And then, in the proposed condition, the client plans to keep the existing house, the landscaped area, over here. And then he plans to keep the existing driveway, resurface it, and then make this area into a parking area for the construction vehicles. He plans on adding another driveway over here for ease of access and egress for these vehicles. And in the middle of these two driveways, we will keep the existing trees, as many as we can, and add, we discussed rhododendrons in this area. So this area was once a grassy incline. We plan to make a level parking area using a retaining wall. This retaining wall varies in height and was designed by a structural engineer. A structural engineer has given the plans to the engineering department, and they're okay with them. He plans on using appropriate earth retention systems during construction to not affect the abutters' properties. In the rear of the house, plan on having the wall go in this direction to allow for a storage area back here with a fence. The storage area will be blocked from the street, so it will be visually nonexistent. Snow storage will be in the southwest corner of the property and also in this area between the house and Pope's Lane. This is a crushstone area. And we've also designed a stormwater system. The system is comprised of subsurface infiltration chambers, which will promote infiltration and cut down on peak rates. The stormwater system has been reviewed by the engineering board as well. They're okay with this. Our client proposes to remove the existing septic system and connect to the existing forest main stub, which is in Pope's Lane here. There will be a pump, which will go right about here. The sewage will be pumped up the street, up Pope Lane, to the top where it becomes a gravity sewer line. And as I said, the engineering department has reviewed this. They said they're okay with our plans. Any questions?
The only thing that I'll add to that is that when you go out to the site, as you probably, many of you have already been out to the site, there is a large hedge of arborvitae that really blocks the building from the street. That is shown on your plan, and we are proposing to keep that, which provides quite a visual screen. You really can't really even see the house from the street. So I thought I would point out that those trees that are in this bubbled area here will remain. We would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'm going to open it up to the board. We'll start with Jim.
You guys saw there's one floodlight?
Yes, so there's one floodlight on the building, and then there are wall-mounted lights on light poles on top of the wall. So it will be...
They're all blocked, trying to...
They will be, you know, blocking in the back so it doesn't go in the neighbor's property.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
The storage area is going to be fenced. I saw comments in the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, so we had previously had it over here, and it was a chain-linked area in the corner. And then we decided this area back here would have been unused. So we decided to use this as a storage area and make the snow storage area. Made it a lot easier, you know, now we can plow snow over there visually. You know, the building will be blocking everything that's being stored back.
And the dark green is all grass?
Yeah, this is grass here. This whole area over here will not be touched during the construction. This area is currently, you know, kind of landscaped. It's got trees, but Michael plans to clean it up, do some landscaping, plant some bushes.
23 Pope's is a contractor's yard, too?
Yes.
And that's which side of the map?
To the right.
To the right, okay. No, I think I saw our engineers comment, engineering comment, so I'm okay.
Nathaniel?
This is the part of Pope's Lane that's between Route 1 and 95. Is that right? You said there was a retaining wall planned in the back because of the slope to make that more of a flat parking lot?
Yes. So the retaining wall will go in this area. I have structural plans over here if you want to...
How high is that wall?
So it varies in height. Down here it's near two feet. Up here it is near about 10 feet. We have a fence on the top for fall protection.
Who are the abutters?
So...
You saw the abutters, if you read the newspaper the other day. This is where the controlled burn was done with the town manager and the...
Oh, that's right.
That's right here. DeLuigi's is here, and they purchased this property. So this is under renovation for whatever they're going to be doing, but that was where that little event... And then there's a contractor's yard right here. And then we've got Bitcon and Mantor Construction on the other side of the street. And as you're heading down Pope's Lane, you get into DeLuigi's and then the strip mall backside.
Has there been anybody that's raised any concern about the height of that retaining wall? You know, the abutters, that is?
I've been heard from many of them.
Other than engineering, they wanted the details, which we provided.
But the abutters don't have a problem with it?
We provided.
What size construction trucks are going to be back there?
He has four trucks, an F-350, an F-450, a Chevy 2500, and a boom truck.
A what truck?
A boom truck.
A boom truck. So is the 450 a diesel?
Yes.
And the boom is also?
Yes.
So there's only one diesel out of those three, four?
It's a 350?
Yes.
Okay. That's not a huge diesel, though, a 450?
It's a C-4500, 16-foot truck. Not large.
All the questions I had. Thank you.
Charles?
This is, I think, more a question for the board. So I read engineering's comments, and the one from February 6th concerns me. But then I see a second comment saying that the HC parking space has been addressed and inspectional services has no other issues. But I don't know if those two are related or...
Can I just get a clarification, Charles? Are you talking about the engineer's comments or the building inspector's comments?
Referring to the building comments that said that made a recommendation to the zoning board not to approve the variance based on the previous approvals of 17 Pope's Lane, 23 Pope's Lane, and 8 Garden Street. All the properties mentioned received the same relief from the ZBA and the special permit and site plan approval from the planning board, and all are a mess. The approval of the contractor's yard on the underside lots has been a failure. I would like to point out that the owner of this property has already started working on the site and is using the house as an office without completing the permit process. Other than that, the accessible space shown on the drawing would have to be marked as van-accessible. And I then see a follow-up saying they have addressed the HC parking space. Inspection services has no other issues.
Yeah, I had the same comment. I didn't follow that logic.
Yeah.
Can we get a clarification on this, Doc?
Sure, yeah. I think Rich, the code administrator, was just pointing out the first comment, which I'm pretty sure still stands after... which I'm pretty sure still stands after speaking with him. And then the second comment was just they revised the plans to address anything that they could do on the plan specifically that it was looking for. So the handicap parking space is there, so he's okay with the plan set.
Rich, okay.
The first part of that is for the board to discuss.
So can we discuss that? Because I get the impression that Rich is not in favor of this. True. I would agree with you from what I read on that comment also. Of course, they did get the variance from unanimous vote.
From ZBA?
From ZBA for that. Against his recommendation. Against his recommendation, but he's going on history, also from other sites at the same time. And I think he's concerned, at least is the way I read it, that he's concerned about contractor's yards coming in and not keeping up with the cleanliness and the way we want the areas to be. How involved? We want to get into this conversation, because now it's getting a bit more broad. And this may be something we may need to address as a board, as opposed to this particular applicant.
Well, he also stated that the planning board had, under its authority in those places, to find them in noncompliance of site plan and find them. But Rich is our agent that does that, I thought.
We have to be informed, or we have to be the ones who catch it and then bring it to-
Bring it to Rich.
To Rich.
Okay.
In relationship to this particular site, the way I was reading it, and I don't know if the rest of the board did also, but this is special permit. So one of them is basically a nuisance for the surrounding area, which is what Rich is pointing out, which may not fall under variance. But if the rest of the board feels that this, his comments might fall under the special permit, where we can discuss it a little further, then I'm hoping to the board to discuss that. Obviously, we haven't brought it to the applicant yet, so we will in just a moment. But I'm going to give it to them in a second if the board has any other particular comments associated with that.
Well, when I read that, and I saw ZBA went ahead, and that's why I asked about storage, because that, I think, was one of his complaints, too, the way things were being stored. When I read that, I was a little bit concerned, but then-
These are also, this is also a smaller site, too.
It's a smaller site. It's, I think, it's a-
Compared to the other ones that are-
It's not the same use. And thirdly, for me, I just have a hard time denying something based on, penalizing the applicant based on something he has no control over other sites, which is something that's more our responsibility in my mind. You know, I would think if the code administrator is concerned about those other sites, I'd be very willing, and I think anybody on the board would be very willing to say, let's send a letter to Rich to take some action. But I think that, in my mind, the state of those other sites are more our responsibility for not acting if they're not in conformance with their site plan. Not the applicant, because applicant can't do anything about it. All he can do, and all we can do is maintain, you know, make sure that he maintains his site. And with the stor-, I thought it had to do more with storage. I don't know what the other messes are out there. But where they've moved the storage from the side to the back, and it's fenced. What kind of a fence?
We had proposed a chain link.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's behind the building completely. You won't be able to see it.
So, I mean, that's my thought on it, but I don't know if anybody, what anybody else thinks.
I might have read it a little bit different than you, but it was a shorter comment. John sounds like he's jumping up and down.
I don't interpret it the same way, Peg. I interpret this as encroachment, that the building inspectors had a real high issue with these type of uses. You know, there are other residential uses. I went down there. I saw a family living there.
But they were nonconformance.
I understand, but, I mean, I'm concerned by that comment. Here's one member.
Okay. I can tell you that when I read it, I interpreted it as not that they weren't in compliance, the other sites, okay, or that construction usage in general, contractor's yards. Not that they weren't in, not that they were out of compliance, but that the sites were too small for what they were doing on that site and that we approved it along the way. That's the way I read it. I'm getting the feeling personally that this particular applicant, that I don't feel that what his usage is, where he's only talking, I think it was three, four employees?
Two.
Two, two employees, including yourself or along with yourself?
Including himself.
Okay, so three total, or two?
Two total.
Two total, excuse me. Two total. The site's going to be a little bit smaller. Of course, we have to plan, that's the name of the board, planning, that we have to consider the fact that if his business is successful, it will hopefully grow, and he would have more employees, but he would have to stay within the confines of what his site would allow. And that's where I think, that's the way I interpret it, is that the other sites were going beyond their purview. Now, that's one I was going to bring it up, similar to Charles. I just wasn't sure if that's something that we need to discuss beyond this. It may be a discussion we have to bring up outside of this. Yeah, more procedurally and not necessarily hold this applicant to those standards. That's the way I look at it. Whether or not, whether or not he, I'm sorry, let me just finish my thought. Whether or not he actually reaches all of the criteria on this special permit with the way the site is set up. I think that's the way I'm going to vote accordingly, and I personally feel he does.
And I have to agree. I did see the term, you know, the site is too small. So the other sites are too small for what they're doing or whatever the company is pointing out. So I do agree with that. I think we've had discussion in the past before, haven't we, Jim, on the contractor's yard? It seems to have been-
Well, there are quite a few of them congregating in this one area, as it was noted before.
Yeah, so it may be more appropriate with a, you know, reviewing the bylaw and seeing what-
Well, again, we take recommendation from the zoning enforcement officer. It's his job, not our job, to enforce the zoning bylaw. We approved it, but he needs to enforce it, and if he has a problem with it.
He should be bringing it to us in terms of what his recommendations are.
It's his job. It's not my job to drive around town. If we see things, we can report it. But, I mean, clearly it's his job to do that.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, I agree.
Not ours.
Weren't we all going to be deputized one time? I remember one year where we were all going to go out and check sites.
I think that, yeah, the storage unit. Yeah, let's not get off the rails on this one. Well, you opened a can of worms, Charles.
Sorry.
Anything you want to, no, no, that's fine. It was going to come up anyway.
Can I, do you want me to jump in now or later?
You want the applicant to respond to any of this, or do you have any other comments from what we said?
I'm fine with that.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. This was discussed at Board of Appeals, because Rich was actually at the Board of Appeals, as he typically is, and he made his comments there. And the board, in granting the variance and the finding that they did, basically came down in this, similar as Ms. Zelinski, which is there are some folks who are either not abiding by the permits that they've gotten or they're not fitting well within their site, but we shouldn't hold that against this particular applicant. And so they voted to go forward. The specific case, I think, that was most egregious that was discussed is the one that's right next door to this one. And I think there is enforcement that could be done there if the board or the building inspector so chose to do that. But this applicant has a much smaller business and has owned the property now since the end of August. And he keeps it neat, and he keeps it clean, and he has a nice design here for what he wants to do. And he'll have to live by the plan that he's showing you, and he understands that. So that was, this was a similar conversation that we had with the Board of Appeals, but that's where the board came down, was that this applicant should be able to stand on its own and present you with an application and not be painted with the brush of what some others maybe are doing.
Anything else from the board? This is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone out that has any comments about this particular applicant? Please use the podium.
Bill Bradstreet, Tommy Member, Precinct One. I'm sure I missed it. Contractor's yard. What material will be stored there? I think I heard the yard described as having a permanent fence with lighting. Does that prohibit outside music or whatever, or is that not applicable?
Well, the general bylaws would still come into play with outdoor audio.
I'm only asking because I have heard it mentioned before for some sites.
Yeah, the specifics of, at least I did not get any comments on the specifics of what is going to be used at his contractor's yard, but masonry and-
Carpentry.
I'm sorry, can you?
Staging equipment would be stored within that crushed stone area.
Oh, okay. So it doesn't sound like there'll be any materials stored on site, something that they would be picking up along the way and-
Usually, everything gets delivered to job sites.
Okay.
So we might have overload of something, which we would use that space to put in for maybe a next project or something.
So unlike a landscaper who would, might have mulch on property and things like that, you wouldn't have anything like that? Okay. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? Have any questions, comments? No. Well, I bring it back to the board. Do we feel comfortable enough to close the public hearing and continue?
Move the question.
Then I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
All right. I have a motion. Okay. All those in favor? All right, opposed? Excellent. So we're at a stage now. Is there any discussion, or are we ready to move forward with the vote on the special permit and then the site plan?
So how are we going to address some of these problems as a board?
Well, we can open it up to discussion just right now on the board only. We'll talk about it from a site plan, excuse me, from a special permit first. The criteria was laid in front of us. We got favorable comments from the entire staff, overall, with the exception of the one comment that we had from the building inspector. And it's really, it sounds like you, John, are the ones who wants to keep the ball rolling on that. If you want to discuss it, go right ahead.
Well, I just, I personally have a hard time, you know, if, I mean, I've always been pro-business in this town, but with all the encroachment, and I've been down there, you know, obviously, the neighborhood has changed dramatically. But I don't like the fact that, you know, we're granting this, and there's problems. So, you know, I get the argument, you know, should one person be penalized, but you could make that argument on every single applicant that comes in as we go down the street. So at what point do we say enough's enough?
I can understand your logic on that. I personally feel that this particular applicant meets the criteria, given the size of the lot and the size of his business. I don't have a problem with it myself.
But there was a little, I shouldn't, you know, interrupt, sorry about that. But there was, you know, I'm reading the minutes from the zoning board, and they're talking, there's some inconsistency of what was told to the zoning board. There was going to be up to eight employees. You know, office use with the applicant's mother working there. Am I reading that correctly?
There'd be two people in the office. I have eight total employees. So the other five to six employees, which now even half of those, two labors, three labors, would come in the morning, grab the truck, leave, go to site, and then drop off trucks. Me and my mother work in the office. So there's only two on site.
So just the way that read?
I mean, given, me personally, given the site, the way it's going to be presented, there's not a lot of materials on site. It's basically a staging area where they're going in, getting things, and leaving. I personally don't have a problem with it. I think it meets the criteria. I understand, because it threw me for a loop, too. I mean, I said that. I backed away, and I think it's something that we may need to relook or maybe get a better comment in general about contractor's yards, landscapers' yards, in terms of town, because we have other areas of town where they do tend to pop up. It might be, it's a discussion for outside of this, more of a procedural, as far as I'm concerned.
So if this property gets sold down the line in the future, what restrictions are placed on the property? Do they have to live with the same restrictions that we're approving now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Charles, any, you were also one who was commenting on it. Before we bring forward a certificate of action, I didn't know if-
No, I just, you know, wanted to ask about that. Is there a precedent in place? I don't, like, obviously, I don't want to penalize the applicant based on what the other people have been doing. And I worry, not worry necessarily, but I wonder if, you know, each and every one of these has been granted in the past. So is there a precedent being set of that, you know? Who are we to say no now, having done it so many times before?
I can't think of one that we've said no to in terms of a precedent in the past, but I wouldn't say that it's influenced my vote, one way or the other.
Well, it is a special permit, and you do have extra criteria you have to go through. And I think what we've seen over the years, when we have these special town meetings, particularly for zoning, that's an opportunity for the zoning enforcement officer to say to us, hey, we need to tweak this bylaw or that bylaw, which we've done over the years. And so I think if he had an issue, we could bring it up to him to maybe put some more teeth into or actually specifically address, you know, these types of contractor's yards. Then maybe we could do that if he needs more, but I think he's got enough ammunition. I mean, if he saw someone using it as a residential house, there's a cease and desist. It's not allowed. And he saw things were stored improperly on sites or, you know, he can, he has enforcement powers to enforce those. But this particular applicant is, it seems like they're very, less intense use, a small use. And where it's located, between two highways, this isn't Woodville. I mean, this is not to demean the area, but, I mean, this is a highly industrial-use area, highway corridor area.
On top of that, the public inspector had the opportunity to point out specifically if he felt it wasn't meeting the criteria. He was talking about it in relationship to the variance. So I know he said that he's concerned about what's going on on different sites, but he could have specifically said that he didn't think it met the special permit process, too.
That's true, yeah.
That's another thing that, you know, can go forward. And he had a secondary memo that he could have mentioned it also. It wasn't just the first one that he brought up, so.
Okay.
And what we have, where I'm comfortable is the engineering of the plans. And as Jim said, this area, and I'm not meaning to demean it at all, but it has been changing over the years. We've had more contractor yards go there. D. Luigi's across the street.
They must have doubled in size since I've been on the board.
D. Luigi?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, they're pretty big, so it's become more of that industrial. We have, didn't we also take contractor yards, oh, we did, out of Davisport. Remember there were contractor's yards in the zone?
Yeah, we've restricted them in other areas altogether.
They have to be someplace. And, you know, that area is changing. So I think that the building inspector, as I said, I remember when we did our zoning workshops, our housekeeping, the building inspector would always sit down with planning, and he would go through things that he felt, because he's our eyes on the street, what we needed to tweak or to add in or take out or whatever. So with the other, everybody else appears comfortable with it. I'm comfortable with this.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with that.
Bethany, have you been quiet down there? Anything in particular that you want to add to the comments?
Well, I would definitely echo the sentiment that we should definitely not be punishing, for lack of a better word, this applicant for others who have been granted variances or special permits and have let their, the condition of the property be less than desirable, according to the building inspector. That, I just, I don't think that's right. Like, you guys already mentioned, that's, the role of the town is to enforce those things, not to take it out on the next applicant. I did notice in the notes from the zoning board that there's a dumpster planned to be on the property. Is that, did I misread that?
No, I saw dumpster, too.
Is it a dumpster?
Just point out where the dumpster was going to be.
A dumpster on site?
Yeah, the storage area over here.
So up out of view. What kind of materials would be dumped, would be contained in that dumpster?
That's only just trash. No, no hazardous. Everything's just broken wood. Stuff that typical, your typical commercial where you have the, where they pick up the trucks, the little bays. We just can't, because of wood goes in that, and it would not, it doesn't go through, so they make us get 15 dumpsters.
What kind of work does your business do?
Carpentry, masonry, and some site division, site work.
What do you mean by site work?
Digging for foundations.
Oh, okay. Now, as what was pointed out, there may be, there are actually eight total employees?
Correct.
So there's a possibility that eight individuals arrive with eight different vehicles to start the day? No?
No. Mostly, like my foreman's, they have vehicles that they bring home, and they drive it straight to jobs.
The thing, I'm not trying to interrupt, but public hearings, we've closed the public hearing. It's really supposed to be a discussion between the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Don't answer that question. Oh, I'm sorry. Don't answer that question.
We'll disregard it.
I just don't want it to turn back into another public hearing. It's one thing to get a brief yes or no. So I guess unless there's any other comments from the board, if anyone's ready to make, we ready to vote on this? Okay, so we have a certificate of action. I think we'll leave this one to Peg, 'cause I'm not gonna go to my left.
This is to certify that a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on March 26, 2019, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted. We, the Danvers Planning Board, having been requested under Section 30 of the zoning bylaw for special permit approval for property located at 25 Pope's Lane, Assessors Map 40, Lot 17A, do hereby vote to grant the request of special permit for a Contractor's Yard, the request submitted by Michael Seelig, for improvements to the site, including retaining wall fenced area, new sanitary sewer service, secondary, second driveway entrance, landscaped areas, and stormwater drainage system, as shown on the following plans and subjects to the conditions herein. Plans: Permit, site plan set 25 Pope's Lane, Map 40, Lot 17A, Danvers, Massachusetts. Prepared for MJS Construction, Inc., 177 Main Street, Lynnfield, Mass. Prepared by Hancock Associates, 185 Center Street, Danvers, Mass. Consisting of seven sheets revised through 3/7/2019. Sheet 1 of 7, C1, Site Plan, Site Plan of Land in Danvers, Mass. Existing conditions, Sheet 2 of 7, Existing Conditions Plan of Land. Sheet 3 of 7, C2, Site Preparation Erosion Control Plan. Sheet 5 of 7, C3, Landscape and Lighting Plan. Sheet 4 of 7, C4, Grading and Utilities Plan. Sheet 6 of 7, C5, Site Details. Sheet 7 of 7, C6, Sewer Details. Stamped by Sheets 1 and 3 through 7, Catherine A. Cruz, Registered Professional Engineer, Number 51384. Sheet 2, Joseph M. Small, Professional Land Surveyor, Number 45717. Plan 25 Pope's Lane, Danvers, Mass. Prepared by Room &amp; Garversino, LLC, 48 Grove Street, Somerville, Mass. Consisting of two sheets dated 1/02/2019, drawing number S01.1, General Notes. Drawing number S1.0, Site Plan and Law Section. Conditions: 1. A shoring plan must be provided to the Engineering Division prior to any cutting and soil removal for the construction of the retaining wall shown on the provided plans. 2. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, this special permit certificate of action shall be recorded at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. The board finds that pursuant to Section 30.3 of the zoning bylaw, conditions for a special permit, all the following conditions have been satisfied. 1. The municipal water and sewer systems will not be overloaded by the proposed use. 2. The public streets will not become overloaded by the proposed use. 3. The value of other land and buildings will not be depreciated by the proposed use. 4. The specific site is an appropriate location for the use or structures. 5. The use development will not be adversely affected, affect the neighborhood. 6. There will be no, there will not be an undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. 7. The proposed use or structures will be in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw. Any approval of this special permit shall lapse within two years from the grant thereof, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause. The proposed development shall also be subject to site plan approval.
I have a motion on special permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
The duration of this special permit should be three years?
I think that's actually in our bylaws anyways.
Yes.
Do we need to ask for an amendment? I mean, it's...
Yeah, it's part of, yeah.
Do I have a motion on the amendment? To three years instead of two?
Second.
All those in favor of the special permit?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. It passes. Now we have the site plan.
This is to certify that a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on March 26, 2019, by a motion duly made and seconded, it was voted. We, the Danvers Planning Board, have been requested under Section 4 of the zoning bylaw for site plan approval for property located at 25 Pope's Lane, Assessors Map 40, Lot 17A, do hereby vote to approve the request for site plan approval submitted by Michael Seelig for improvements to the site, including a retaining wall, fenced area, new sanitary sewer service, second driveway entrance, landscaped areas, and stormwater drainage system, as shown on the following plans, permit site plan as described. This approval is also subject to the attached list of general conditions approved by the planning board on January 27, 2004, amended through February 27, 2018, which are incorporated in the certificate of actions by reference. Any approval of the site plan shall lapse within two years from the grant thereof, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the site plan?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one again. Good luck.
Mr. Chimp, can I bring something up?
Look, please.
Can we, as a board, encourage the building inspector to enforce his concerns around Contractor Yards? What can we do as a board to encourage him to enforce?
Well, given that we're in the briefing for planning staff, I think it's a good place to start on.
Okay.
Because you kinda touched on what I was gonna talk about. I think it may not be a bad idea that when we get comments like that, even if it seems secondary, that either the building inspector, either comes into our meetings to give those kinds of explanations, or comments specifically on something like a special permit, or brings to our attention if he wants to discuss possible...
Thank you for putting faith back in democracy for me.
Sir, sorry, sir, we're in the middle of a meeting still. If we want to continue some type of a zoning change.
Yeah, that can certainly be arranged. I think you had mentioned, Bill, previously, well, tonight, Rich, if possible, addressed the specific criteria for special permitting that he feels isn't being addressed, other than just a general comment about past practice.
Right, he's talking about a variance, which is looser.
Sure.
If you, not to, not to bring down the idea of a variance, but it's not as high of a criteria as special permit. He's, the building inspector is saying he doesn't like it associated with a variance, but he doesn't comment it on a special permit.
Sure. And at the staff level with the applicant for the project that just went before us, I think part of the issue Rich was having, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I'm pretty confident of what he was thinking, was that a lot of the sites that have come forward, as we've all pointed out, were, even for the highway corridor zone that they're in, not conforming in terms of size. So you have a lot that was originally laid out as a house lot. You know, it was never intended to be something other than that, which doesn't mean that he can't go forward with the business, but it's just a question of, the zoning is supposed to be one acre, and they're all about half that, if not a little less. So it's just the tightness of the sites that we're allowing them. So maybe that is a zoning change where we say, you know, it's strictly enforced, or up the acreage, or tweak the zoning for that zone in some way, saying Contractor's Yards are allowed, but they need whatever acreage maybe Rich feels they need. Maybe we should ask him.
Even looking at different types of, 'cause I'm gonna go back to just how a landscaper has so much more stuff in their yard besides a couple of trucks being parked there at night.
Yep, for sure. Landscaping, a masonry operation, you know, is certainly a lot different than trucks showing up and just storing staging and perhaps some equipment.
Right.
It's definitely a different operation. I mean, we even have, I think, some folks down there just doing cordwood storage.
Yeah.
So that's...
It's huge. I mean, to me, it's an ice store, all that wood hanging out there, but...
Yeah, I mean, not commenting specifically on any particular site. It's, you know, it's an allowed part of the operations, and maybe that's something that we look at, just material storage may be materially different than certain other types of operations.
Yeah, it's almost like kinda grading system of what type of a Contractor's Yard we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think what, the background I got from Rich, obviously, I wasn't here at the time, was that, you know, it was a good faith effort to sort of allow these operations to continue in town, given that land's becoming more valuable, and it's hard to locate these things. I mean, they do need a certain set of criteria to operate, so it's not as though you can just put one sort of anywhere. It's that to be a certain road network, and they need to be able to get in and out, so.
Well, this particular applicant brought up an interesting notation when he was discussing that he wasn't gonna have any materials there.
Right.
Basically, his particular job is everything, and in the modern day, people are ordering things and having it brought directly to the site.
Right.
Thank you, Amazon. But it just, just the way things are, you're not, you're not buying things in bulk from, you know, the person down the road and storing it in your yard and using it as you need it, which is where a lot of these guys are now, they're slightly different. Similar to the way we're looking at banks. I know it's a totally different subject, but when we talk about banks, we've always struggled with the amount of parking, 'cause we all think of traditional banking. And now it's mostly online and electronic, and fewer parking spaces and things like that. Maybe we need to readdress some of those things in a cleanup effort.
Something like that, maybe it's more queuing for drive-up tellers as opposed to parking spaces, or, you know, something that people are using more. I don't know, I just threw that out there, but...
Well, something like this, where if there's no materials involved, maybe we should be considering, you know, maybe fewer parking spots, but larger parking spots because of trucks. Be concerned more about housing those trucks. If they're gonna be diesel, you can't have them out in the snow year-round, because they won't, they won't run. You know, stuff like that. It's getting a little bit more technical for me. I don't like it. I don't go beyond my purview, but I just, those were thoughts that kinda crossed my mind, so.
Okay. For what it's worth, I could...
Yeah, I agree. That'd be great, if you can get him to talk about it.
Sure. Yeah, I was gonna say, I can certainly bring this up with the building division. Perhaps the other employees that work there, too, may have other thoughts. So can get a list together, for sure.
So we'll continue with, we'll let Dave have the field. David, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize.
Whatever's clever. Sure. Actually, after that, I think we're good. I mean, the future meeting dates are what they are. The next meeting's April 9, and I think the following one after that's April 23. We were looking to try to schedule some sort of public workshop with Ted Brovitz for the, I guess, what, maybe we're now calling the downtown corridor rezoning, towards the end of April, but I can shoot out an email to everybody and let them know when that date's firmed up, where it will be, and what we're actually looking to do. But if anybody has any ideas that they want something specifically addressed for property of Butters or folks who live in the district, I think that's what we're gonna target with this first meeting. Those who are directly right there, certainly send me an email or give me a phone call.
I will be gone April 13th to the 20th.
13th to the 20th, okay.
And then in May, April, May 6th, is that, are we gonna have, I mean, 6th through the 12th, which is a Saturday.
I won't be around in those two weeks of May either. I'm out of the country. What was it, Peg, your...
The first one was April. School vacation week, yeah. I'll be gone then, and I'll be gone May 6th through 12th. I hope that's not a planning board meeting, is it? It could be. Or maybe not. I mean, I thought I planned it better, but...
I'm away from the 27th to the 4th.
Oh, boy.
April 27th to May 4th.
Okay.
Well, the planning board's on the 14th of May, and then...
Oh, good. So I won't miss that one. I won't miss any.
14th to the 28th.
Good.
28th is the day after the one, I think, too. Then April, April 23rd.
I'm boring, I'm here for already.
All right.
So it looks like on regular dates, I'm fine, but if you're gonna do a special meeting, school vacation week is not good.
Okay.
April, yeah. May, first week of May. Are you gone the first week of May? You oughta go on the first week of May.
A little bit, yeah.
I'm going for the first two, first half week of May.
You guys...
I never leave.
I'm not here the 9th, but I'm just the associate, so... April 9th.
There were all the associates at one point in time. Don't ever say that.
Just for what it's worth, on that front, the chair and I chatted briefly a couple weeks ago, and for these workshops, too, given the intense amount that we had for the 40R and that most of you all were showing up, it may just be send a representative. I don't know if it needs to be a full board there, but we can discuss that at next meeting if you'd like. Just a thought. Given that test probably...
Okay. Now, just being involved with the 40R so much, I always thought it was good to have as many board members that could possibly show up, so they could hear the comments. And also, you know, you hear what was being said at the workshop. We may have questions. We all may have quite certain questions that even the Butters have. So, but that's just my two cents. I always think it's good to have people there.
Anything else for staff? Then I have, next one is the March 12 minutes. Any comments about the minutes?
Move to accept.
Second, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unless there's anything further, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Good night.